All right, I'm calling this meeting to order and attendance are Commissioners Brooks, Duncan, and Matarri. Are there any changes to the agenda? All right, hearing none. We'll go ahead with our first item and this is PMR onsite nearsite medical clinic for Cootney County employees. And Sylvia, I'll let you introduce our team.
Today we're going to be presenting the concept of a nearsite primary care clinic.
You want to have a microphone on?
Oh, it's on. For, to start in January of 2024, and our brokers from Alliant Employee Benefits, it's Scott Burkhart and Coco Brockoff are going to do the presentation for us. So Scott, take it.
Thank you. Scott Burkhart with Alliant and Coco Brockoff with Alliant. So some of this is going to be repetitive for some of you that we've had discussions with the last couple of weeks. But in 2022, Alliant introduced the employer-sponsored nearsite primary care concept to Cootney County. The background of this is there's a significant primary care physician shortage nationally and locally, and that leads to, you know, long wait times for doctor office visits and actually higher costs through more significant health conditions. And we all know mental health is also a major concern these days especially. And the entry step to mental health care is often through a primary care physician. Got a tight labor market, it's difficult to attract and retain talent. And the health insurance trend continues to increase at eight percent plus per year. That's, that's a standard inflationary factor that we see. I'm going to have some good news for you at the end, end of this presentation here, but that's, that's kind of what we expect every year. There's an emerging trend in employer, with employer-sponsored nearsite clinics. The concept's not new, it's been around for years. Large organizations have been doing it, establishing onsite or nearsite clinics for their employees and families. But for, for the, for the smaller group, 750 employees, Cootney County is considered a, a smaller mid-market employer. It was, it hasn't been cost feasible to establish your own doctor office. But there are established vendors that, in our country, such as PMR Health, that are expanding into the Pacific Northwest. And there's other models, other entities like Premise Health, Palladina, Quad Med. I'm not going to go deeply into that, but those models are slightly different and we don't think it's a great fit for, for Cootney County specifically, or, or our region specifically. So we'll, we'll talk about why we recommended PMR Health. But there's also local physicians that are establishing their own concierge or direct primary care clinics, and there's just a slight difference. But concierge care is a membership fee and they will also bill insurance and then direct primary care clinics are, just pay a membership fee and, and there's no insurance involvement. But anyway, the key benefits of a nearsite primary care clinic, there's immediate primary care access, no member copays or out-of-pocket costs. This is a, a big issue. And we'll talk later about even for some prescription drugs, some common prescription drugs, there, there's no, no copays. So the, their root cause medicine, you know, the doctors, even the local direct primary care doctors are breaking away from the existing health system so they can get back to root cause medicine, you know, spending more than, than five minutes with a patient. They can spend 20, 40, 60 minutes with a patient where they can't do that inside the current health system. And we can shift some care from higher cost specialty, urgent care and ER into a lower cost primary care setting. The, the primary care physician is also working solely on behalf of the patient, not the health system or the insurance company. Now, the employer-based models, the primary care physician can also focus on employer health plan objectives, can, can address work comp and employment-related services, testing, physicals, et cetera. And if established properly in an integrated basis, which we'll touch on briefly here, you can achieve significant savings for the health plan overall. And it's a major perk to attract and retain talent. Cootney County actually has the opportunity to be the second employer in our area to, to work with a direct primary care clinic, so. The background, in last year, Alliant presented PMR healthcare to Cootney County. It's a significant opportunity, but also a significant commitment. So the, the board elected to pause for the 22, 23 budget period and we, the county also wanted us to explore and discuss the feasibility of working with local direct primary care models. And it's our alliance, you know, we always want to work locally wherever possible. We'll talk about why the local business models don't, don't make sense for a large self-funded health plan such as Cootney County. But they're, they're great, great models for other sized businesses, but not, not for, for Cootney County, so. The last several weeks then, we've conducted a number of in-depth meetings with county officials and key team members, and it's primarily focused on why Alliant did recommend PMR healthcare. It centers around the differences of the health insurance market. Companies less than 50 employees, they don't have the compliance with the Affordable Care Act specifically, there's no issues with adverse selection, additional risk, and complexity, reporting analytics. Those companies just don't have to, to, to deal with that per se. That's why a local direct primary care or concierge model could be, is a great fit for, for groups less than 50 employees. But for companies greater than 50 employees, where the Affordable Care Act and ERISA are driving the train, so to speak, and which Cootney County is a self-insured entity, there's also pooling versus experience rating, and so we, we talked about that in our discussions. Also, the different business models, integrated versus non-integrated. And those, everything of our discussions last several weeks centers around those things. Compliance issues, I won't go into those right now, but there's risk and cost aspects. And then there's an issue of is the primary care clinic, can it be available to all county members versus just a select few who waive, who have access to other major med? There's issues of reporting and analytics, there's work comp issues to, that we discussed, and, and the major perk to attract reward and retain talent. I just throw those issues out there because we've done in depth in those in our meetings. But the analysis that we go through behind the scenes that we went through last year was deep and complex, and there's a whole bunch of rabbit trails and we kind of talked through some of those rabbit trails in depth. And it all comes back to why we recommended PMR, which we still do. And I think the consensus of the, the people, team members that we met with, I think that's the consensus. This was the 2022 PMR proposal. The Cootney County Health Plan in, in 2022, just the medical and prescription drug, the cost of the plan was $9.5 million, okay? If we take, take that, divide it by plan members, total plan members, there's a per-member per-month cost there, this is just a point of reference. If we just divide it by the number of employees, that's the, the total cost. PMR's proposal over there on the right, they had an expense of $1.35 million, that's a big number, right? But that expense is, is largely a cost shift. It's, it's for services that are currently being done inside the Cootney County Health Plan. There's also added costs for infrastructure, team infrastructure, personnel infrastructure, et cetera. But their expense was 1.35, they projected savings of 2.1 million for a net plan cost of 8.75 million, okay? That was PMR's proposal. Now, and all, all Cootney County members, all employee, who are enrolled in the medical plan, employees, spouses, and children are eligible for that clinic. Now, Alliant, when we looked at that, we, we studied their methodology on how they, they proposed those savings and, and we largely agreed with it. But there's a number of factors that it's going to depend upon, participation, timing, et cetera. So last year, we hedged that. PMR's proposal said, showed 8% health plan savings. We reduced that to about 3% for last year's budget projections, okay? But we think at, at worst, this is a budget-neutral proposal and you can get your own nearsite clinic with no copays, no deductibles, no out-of-pocket costs for your members. So huge win-win. The current status, and I'm almost done here, PMR is currently updating their 2022 proposal and it will likely include about a 4% to 5% annual trend for medical inflation. That's just because we're a year later and, and medical costs do rise. However, Cootney County's actual claim utilization has decreased significantly, pretty significantly, and so we're hoping those two things offset and that their proposal will be roughly similar to where it was last year. And the good news, okay, based on, and I'm kind of taking up David Smith, our analyst's stuff here, but based on data through March, we're showing a 0% increase to the Cootney County Benefit Plan budget for next year. So that's a great starting point, okay? Normally we come in and say, hey, expect 5% to 7% increase, well, this year it's zero. Okay? Now, that could change somewhat in the next couple of months, but right now it's looking great. And we believe the potential savings by implementing PMR could be between 0 and 5% additional savings on top of that, below that, I should say. Again, PMR is projecting 8% savings, but it's all going to depend on participation. From a budgetary standpoint, as we're starting at a 0% increase, we're, Alliant would probably say, let's stay as close to budget neutral as we can, so any savings that we get is just a bonus for next year. I think David Smith in our formal presentation will say a 2% discount. I think that's a fair, fair number, so we, we can implement PMR healthcare, our own nearsite clinic, get a 2% rate discount to budget, and we, we think that's an amazing renewal. So now we're on to where we go from here. As I, as I mentioned from our recent meetings, seemed, seemed to be very favorable feedback, so we're looking to the board, to how do we go from here, leading up to the July board meeting? One possibility is to move forward with the PMR consideration while they update their proposal and assuming it's reasonable compared to last year, move forward with it. And we could even start evaluating possible space, physical space, without either side, either party incurred any hard dollar cost. And then assuming no surprises finalize at the July board meeting, so. Sylvia, do you have any other?
The one thing I did want to let the elective officials know is we did check to see if we needed to do an RFP or bidding process for this, and we checked if legal, and they've indicated that there is, is no provision that we have to do that statutorily, since it's insurance.
Any questions for Alliant?
Can you go back to the second slide, two, two slides ago? Yeah. So.
How do you come up with savings 2.1 net plan cost? I, I see 750. I don't see, I see 750,000, I don't see 2.1 million.
Right. The, the total cost of the plan, 9.5, the, the two rows below that, so 2.1 million savings minus 1.35 million expense should hopefully be 750,000 there if my math was right. And that, that's your net plan cost. So they do have a fixed expense, PMR does. So it's, contractually, we'll commit to, in the first year, 1.35 million. Again, much of that is a cost shift from services that are already being incurred under the self-insured health plan. And then on top of that, because their per-unit costs are significantly lower than what we currently see for primary care services, they're also able to pull in specialty services, urgent care services, emergency room services, that we're, we're currently seeing a significantly higher cost. So overall, they project savings of 2.1 million, even with their expense of 1.35. So the, the difference there is 750,000 return on investment in the first year. Over six years, or five years, they're, they're projecting $6 million of savings for the county plan. That's PMR's projection. We're going to go in, we, Alliant, are going to go in a little more conservative the first year, and then we will analyze plan performance as we go along. But if we get projection or participation roughly at 40%, PMR thinks we can get 60 to 70% of the Cootney County members using that, those savings numbers will even be higher.
And what municipalities use PMR now?
Pardon me?
What municipalities use PMR now?
None locally here. They are, nationally, we can get you some.
Where, where?
Yeah, we can get you some. They've got 80 different clinics over the, the country right now, some of which are public entities or municipalities, so I can get you a reference there if you'd like. They've been in business for 15 years, that was one of the keys that we looked at, so they've got a track record. And they are just expanding, this has been a popular concept on the East Coast and West Coast, just now expanding into the Pacific Northwest. They, PMR established a clinic in Boise for a company called Western Trailers that the county officials went down and visited. That's another reason we looked at them closely as they were moving into Boise. There's one clinic in Boise. I've been, I'm okayed to say this, the Hagadon Corporation just signed a contract for July 1st with PMR. They're establishing a clinic in the Plaza, and so Cootney County would be the second employer in the area to establish this. Huge benefit for retaining talent, recruiting and retaining.
Other questions?
So then I would ask Bruce and Bill if you guys are ready to vote for them to start down that process. We have an action item on the, the thing, the agenda.
I like it. I think it's a good deal, and we can save a lot of money.
Okay. And I'll also tie facilities back into this one after we get to the next item, so.
But does it, I mean, I'm just, I'm just curious what the other folks here think, their at least initial reactions.
Well, I think that the feedback we get from employees now, that our plan is inferior to some of the other employers in the area, especially our, our younger employees that are having children, that out-of-pocket costs are significantly higher. So how would that impact on a, on a well-baby delivery?
Yeah, there's a, there's a significant impact all the way around to employees, spouses, children, that they go in for primary care literally as often as they want with no out-of-pocket costs, okay? Now, some of the stuff, of course, newborn is going to be referred eventually to pediatrician and such, but they can still utilize the primary care office as much as they want, literally.
Bayla?
I'm still glad we.
Okay. Steve?
I'm supportive.
Okay. And Laura?
I mean, it sounds appealing just based on what I've heard.
You want to grab your microphone a little bit? Thanks.
Yeah, it sounds appealing just based on what I've heard so far. I think employees frequently, you know, end up having to go to the emergency department instead of utilizing urgent care because it's just so time-consuming to sit at urgent care for 34 hours. So that alone would be appealing at least to me.
Okay. Jennifer?
I'm supportive of it too, and I think, I think you said the clinic will provide over 200 types of prescriptions, where people are not paying out-of-pocket for that, and then not paying, it sounds like a copay when they go there too. And urgent care and obviously the ER is always backed up, so it seems beneficial to the employees. And a cost savings too.
If I could just, Scott Burkhart again, I had a couple comments. The, the nice thing, another nice thing about this is it's voluntary and they're not locked in. It's not like making an HMO plan selection where they're locked in for a year. They can go to the, the PMR clinic on Tuesday, keep their other doc, go there on Wednesday, go back to PMR. That, it's just a possibility. It's, they're not locked in, it's voluntary, and people can experiment, you know? Go, go to PMR and if they like the doc, they can go there for certain things, go, go to a specialist for other things. Yeah, so we, we think that's a.
Bill, your microphone.
I favor this, I'm sorry. I favor this very much at first blush, but at the same time, can you tell me times when this has not worked in a, for a provider, for a entity like the county? And what was the cause, if you know it?
I personally don't have any track record with establishing nearsite clinics. Alliant does though. One of our clients in Spokane, well, one of our consultants, one of my partners manages a Smith and Wesson account, okay? And I can refer to that, where they established nearsite clinic in the first year and they fell in love with it, but some things didn't work out logistically, so they ended up changing providers, but they kept the model, okay? So there were some bumps along the way, but overall it worked well. I don't have the analytics on overall costs with that, but when we evaluated PMR, that's one of the things we kind of looked at, is their 15-year track record of working with employers in this space, especially relative to what they're publishing as ROI. And they're publishing this as, this is our experience of savings based on a certain participation. Now, some of that success, all, much of that success is built around employee communications and buy-in from county, key county team members to keep discussing this over time. This is not going to be an immediate success, but over a short period of time, if we can get to a 30, 40% participation mark, those savings will hold true. It's just, we've looked at the per-unit costs, we know the prescription drug pricing is significantly lower than what we're currently paying, and so the savings potential is there. There's also referral opportunities to higher quality, lower cost on the hospital side potentially that could, so the savings are there. It all depends on whether people utilize it or not. And in PMR's experience, they will, so.
Sylvia, do you have any idea what percent of the county employees have minor children? I mean, this.
Ooh, I don't know. How many have small children? We don't have those numbers.
We've got it, just not handy. I'm not sure.
We can get that for you.
I think that's, that's an important number.
And the nice thing about PMR is they're going to help us market it to all of our staff, and they take that initiative and do that for us. I think it's a great recruitment tool and a retention tool, because how many insurance companies or employers are offering a clinic that's close by or onsite that you can go and see within the same day without a copay and get some of your prescriptions and potentially labs? And then we can build from there. If we wanted to add our workers' comp part of this into it, we could do that. So I think it's just a great recruiting tool, but we can get you that information.
Please. I've got one other client that's, that's a large client that's looking at this, and they're, they're not even necessarily looking at it from an ROI standpoint. They said, their comment was, if you can get us to break even, we're in. Just, that's, if this is budget neutral, simply from the, the access to primary care physicians and from a recruiting retention standpoint of employees. It's, I've had other comments from another, another client that's basically said, this is life-changing for our employees, the fact that they can solely focus on wellness for 20, 40, 60-minute primary care physician visits, so.
People that stay with it, I think you mentioned that.
Yeah, there, thank you. Their retention rate over those 15 years is 96% of their clients they've retained. And some of that law, 4% is going to be simply acquisition of other companies or being purchased, and so the contract just goes away. And I've got some answers to your questions I can email you on, that you had last fingers, if you want me to address those now or I can later.
If you'd like to address some, I mean, I'll, I'll just say one other thing for folks who aren't familiar with this model. I use it on top of my insurance. And the concierge model is great, because when you go in for your physical, for example, under an insurance plan, it's pretty much, how do I get you out of here quickly because I'm not going to make that much money if you stay here too long? When you see your doctor under a concierge plan, it's a minimum of an hour, talking, just, you know, really going through your overall health. And I think that's what people will discover, is because you don't, and it costs nothing. Same thing, like if you cut yourself and you need stitches, things like that, I believe that's what the doctor can take care of for you with no copay. So it really, it saves a lot of money for folks who just want to go in and see their doctor. And it's all based on a subscription model, so the doctor's getting paid whether they see you or not. And so in this case, they're not in a hurry, they want to give you good healthcare. And it actually attracts a different type of a doctor who wants to get out of the insurance umbrella, which tells them how to perform medicine, and into allowing them to actually give good medicine to their patients. And that's just been my experience with it, and I seen, I think it would be the same experience here for the county employees.
I wanted to kind of sound off on what you were saying, Bruce. I was under a primary care plan with my family for a couple of years, and just like you said, I think, you know, there was a time we ran into, we were in the forest and I had like a horrible allergic reaction to something, and then I just called them on the weekend at like 4:00 PM, and they answered the phone, and we talked on the phone for like five minutes, I'm in the, you know, the mountains. And then they said, okay, well, I'll prescribe this to you over the phone, then I'd go pick it up at Walgreens. So I mean, you know, you don't get that with a typical plan. And how much would that cost, you know what I mean, under regular insurance? So some great pros, for sure.
Yeah. And just a couple last comments. PMR, we, upfront, we, we talked with them, and we're working directly at the CEO level with them. That was another thing that, that we really liked. They're a big company, but we are working with the CEO, very committed, and they are not committed to coming into a community and pillaging and taking business away from others. It's, it's a totally different business model than local direct primary cares. We think it could actually enhance those other business models. Because PMR is not going to be open to the public, it's only going to be for Cootney County members, and that awareness, and as Bruce mentioned, you mentioned, it's, it's going to make it more appealing for others to potentially look at locals going that direction. They are also actively already collaborating, trying to reach out to Cootney Health and the Northwest Specialty Hospital and see how we can all work together, not take business away. So that was, that was another positive thing. But Bruce had a question as far as what, in our other meeting, about what their renewal status was, what that looks like. This is a three-year contract, that's their standard provision, and it renews for three years, but there is a trigger point at the end of the first three years where everything's going to be re-looked at and readjusted. So it's not an auto, you're locked in for another three years. That, that could be, I talked to the CEO yesterday and he, and he said, we can look at that for the second term, but, but their standard is a normal three-year renewal. And the other question was, what happens if PMR is purchased by private equity? And a great question, I, I asked that yesterday and, and he said they are absolutely not on the market, but if something were to happen down the road, the contract would hold true to a purchasing entity. If that purchasing entity did not honor the terms of the original contract, it's, it's over and done, and, and we can always, always look at another vendor that way too, so.
Yeah, I think the question is geared more towards service levels, because a lot of times acquiring companies come in and they go, how do we cut costs?
Yep.
It's the first thing to increase their profit margins.
And if they don't honor the provisions of the original contract, then that's.
times acquiring companies come in and they go, how do we cut costs?
Yep.
It's the first thing to increase their profit margins.
Absolutely. And if they don't honor the provisions of the original contract, then that's, that's where we can get out of that contract.
Okay.
Anybody else? Any thoughts, comments? Okay. Are we ready for motion then?
What did you want to move to, to...
Would you put this slide back up that says our next step? It's okay. All right, so I guess that first line would be a sufficient motion.
Okay, well, I move that the board move forward with PMR consideration, with the caveat that the 2023 proposal is in line with the 22, 2 proposal.
I second the motion.
Bill Brooks?
Aye.
Commissioner Mataro?
Aye.
Sheriff Duncan?
Aye. All right, thank you guys. If we're ready to move on, we'll go to item two, facilities planning. At our status update yesterday, I ran through just some ideas, and the board agreed to put together a working group to vet some of the ideas and some moves that are coming up in the next couple of years. So I'll start with the working group, and then I'll go through a little bit of the facilities planning. Adult misdemeanor probation, Keith will be that working group, a signee. Building the grounds will be Greg Manley. Community development will be David Callahan. IT is going to be Grant Kinsey. KCSO will be Lieutenant Will Klinkopoulos. And then prosecutor, we haven't heard yet, what, who Stan's going to have as part of that working group. A lot of it starts with the finish of the expansion, because that will alleviate a lot of pressure in courts. The prosecutor, judges, specialty court, and IT. Once the civil attorneys move to the new expansion, IT can expand on the third floor. So coming up is the county assistance and treasure swap that's being contemplated, and then if the sheriff's department moves to Cootney North, that will open up quite a few, quite a few opportunities for other departments to move. So I think Jennifer was there, our sheriff was there yesterday, so I, I'm not necessarily wanting a huge discussion right now. I just wanted to let everybody know kind of where the BOCC was headed with facilities. And the reason why those six departments were chosen for the working group is because they're going to be affected sooner than later. And the treasurer and the clerk are kind of a separate entity, because nobody, no other department's being affected with their move.
Leslie, I was just thinking about this yesterday. Would it be beneficial to have Carleen or someone from either the clerk's side or the district court's side for the judges to be on this committee too?
Not really, because the expansion's the expansion.
Okay.
So it's, this has to do with all the space that's going to be opened up once the expansion happens. And it's really centered on moves to Cootney North. I just want to make sure that we're doing our due diligence and, and making sure that that is a good long-term move for the sheriff's office. I would hate to get them out there and then find out something that we didn't think of, and so I want to ensure that success for that move, so, yeah. Okay, any questions? All right. Item three, commissioners' memo regarding two commissioners required to approve an HR agenda item request, and that's Sheriff Norris.
Yes, I believe I'd like to have a conversation on changing what the current protocols are. I believe that we're all elected officials, and that if we bring something to our collateral commissioner, that that should be sufficient enough to want, to further a conversation in public with the commissioners and, and our HR department that impacts our department. I think as it currently stands, it requires two commissioners.
So the history of why we went to two commissioners is because the liaison was allowing people to put things on, and it wasn't supported. So a lot of staff time was being wasted on projections and, and going forward when it wasn't supported. So that's kind of why that is. I'm really not interested in changing it, because once again, I don't want to fall into that where staff is spending, you know, tens of hours on one item that's not going to be supported. And just because somebody gets on the HR meeting doesn't mean that they're going to get, you know, approved, but at least, at least two people are willing to consider the idea, so.
See, I have a problem with that, because when you have to have two commissioners agree, it's like taking a vote and then moving it forward. I don't, I haven't, I haven't heard any, anything presented to me that doesn't take just a couple minutes at a, at a commission meeting to say, do you guys want to talk about this or not? No, done. In a public way. I think that's much, much better and much best practices, not to do it before it ever sees the light of day.
Bailey?
Yeah, I, I have a tendency to, to agree with both Sheriff Norris and Bill Brooks on this matter. It's, to me, it feels like it circumvents public meetings. There is a need to work out issues in the public realm, and I mean, I understand your point, Commissioner Duncan, that we don't want to waste precious county time and resources. I think that responsibility, that burden's incumbent upon the elected official to vet the issue before the, the elected official then even brings it forward. But I do think that we as elected officials ought to have that chance, that ability to discuss issues and vet them in the public forum, which is an open meeting.
So you have that opportunity at status update at business meeting? We're only talking about personnel matters that are going to require county funds being expended.
I'm not so sure that that changes it for me.
Say that again, Bill. You didn't, you didn't understand what...
I said, I'm not so sure that changes, I'm not so sure that Commissioner Leslie Duncan comment changes it for me.
Yeah, I, I think the intent was just trying to not have our budget person have to calculate how much it's going to affect the budget for all these requests. But I do agree with the, the concept that we don't, you know, by asking for two commissioners, it's a default yes a lot of times. Yeah, I think that the elected officials should, you know, have a little more leeway than perhaps a department head or something like that, as far as bringing something to the public, but they better, they better be able to justify it, if they're going to spend the time and resources, I think. But, you know, if the elected officials want to make it easier to get on these meetings, that's fine, but it, like I said, it has to be justified, and it shouldn't be wasting people's time.
I think as opposed to saying to Brandy, go calculate all this, I don't think that's appropriate, and I think she needs to, to be able to put some brakes on that and say, that hasn't been approved, you can bring it forward for discussion.
So then, now we're having double the amount of meetings?
Hmm?
Now we're having double the amount of meetings? Because if you're just bringing it for discussion and none of the background information's done, we can't vote on it, so then you're going to have to come back. So that's, I think, even a bigger waste of time, so.
So I have a couple thoughts on this. If I was going to approach this, I would be looking before, as an elected official submitting anything, internal alignment and how it's going to impact other internal alignment throughout the county, and parity on top of that. And then I had a situation a lot, a couple years ago, where something was approved in the budget for a promotion, and then when I did go visit one commissioner, I was told that, that they were not going to approve it. So I see both sides of it. It is more work likely for our office, but I think elected officials also need to look at, when they bring something before the board, what budgetary impact it has, internal alignment, and does someone really fall with, regarding policy 120 specifically, where they either need a step or a conversion or a grade? And many times, we go to HR if we have any reorganization we want done and have the job descriptions looked at. But I think there probably needs to be some control on it, but I do understand trying to get two commissions approved and maybe having that dialogue in a public meeting where the elected official could explain the needs. But again, considering the impact for other county employees and internal alignment from there.
So who here has had trouble getting two commissioners? Can you name a specific example where you've had trouble getting two commissioners to put it on the agenda?
Not on, not this board.
No, I, I just feel we're all elected, and we all have the best interest of the citizens of Cootney County, and if we have a, want to have a conversation on a matter that impacts HR, we should be able to have that conversation.
Well, and I would agree, and I would say that it'd be easy to get two commissioners to do that.
I think it's a matter of the board's respect for the elected officials. I'm not talking about every, everybody at every department just to do what they want, but I have respect for the elected officials and that they won't try to abuse this, because if they do, I won't bring it forward. I will say, no, it's not ready for prime time. But is it ready for discussion? Yeah. Do I know how Leslie and Bruce are going to vote? No, because if I do, it's, it's shortcutting the process. It needs, things need to be discussed, even if it's messy.
Clerk Locke, this affects your department a probably a little more.
Yes, and I would want to discuss it with Brandy, but I see literally both sides of this, but I also think every elected official needs to be sensitive when comparing, not only within their departments, looking at people where they're at steps following policy 120. And how do we get there, I don't know, without saying two board, or two commissioners approving that. But I think, you know, I don't know if that's tying with HR and us, the auditor, but I'm willing to consider and look at it, and look at the workload it's going to cause, but I understand the other elected officials maybe need to, maybe present something in the public to the commissioners, whether it's one or two approvals ahead of time.
If the elected officials want to do this, I'm fine with it, but like I said, they have to be able to make the case, and if they don't, then, you know, they've lost in public, and, and people get to see that, so. And again, it's your staff that's going to be doing a lot of calculations.
Yes, and so I would like a little time just to discuss, and I don't know if HR wants to be involved too, that I felt like Sylvia's done, and HR have done a good job during, even getting ready for this budget cycle, to say, hey, we put up some boundaries of not saying we're not asking for steps, but there could be grade conversions, and that we had to go to HR to discuss that before we actually put it in our budget. So I'd like to maybe look at that too, but I do understand the idea of presenting it in the public forum.
Commissioners, as a, as a suggestion, might we consider getting some sort of a template from the clerk's office when we can perform a calculation, sort of an initial pro forma, to sort of vet the issue in the background with the clerk's office before we even bring it to the commissioners to request a meeting? You know, we have, we have intelligent people in our staff, and we can do calculations as well. Why couldn't we run the numbers if the burden responsibility is on the elected official? Why couldn't we do that?
So currently, departments can reach out to us, and we'll run a projection for you, and we have that happen, where we run a projection and they decide not to bring it to a meeting. So we're more than happy to do that, if you just reach out.
And I make that suggestion merely out of respect for the time of your office, because I heard that loud and clear, and it, I can see how that could impact your office adversely.
Yeah, and, yeah, we have a budget accountant, and she's great, and she'll do a projection for you.
But I also think elected officials need to be looking within their own department and looking at their other employees' time and position in following policy 120, and again, going back to that internal alignment, where it's going to cause issues throughout the county, where we're going to have maybe other people present because someone else has some steps done in another department. So we all need to balance that and consider that too.
So is it the liaison then that will determine whether it gets on the agenda, or is it, you're just wanting them to put whatever they want on the agenda?
I think they should work with their liaison at the very least.
I think that's the primary place you go. I mean, for instance, the Bob comes and goes, da-da-da-da-da, let's put this on the agenda. I mean, man, I don't know about that. Have you checked, seen what that does to the budget? Go back and check on that, and just have him call Bruce. There's nothing wrong with him calling Bruce, or Leslie. And it doesn't have to be only Bill, and check them out. I mean, I know Nick gets a lot of things passed, because he calls up and gives us a little heads up. Does that sound good?
He's very good at presenting the information beforehand and doing all of his homework first.
Me, I believe we have a liaison or a collateral system, so I think that we should follow that. So if you're my liaison, then I should contact you and say, hey. Now, if I contact them after that, I believe that's probably okay, but we have this liaison system, I think we should follow that, and I believe if the elected and your liaison commissioner believes it's something that should have a discussion in public, that we should do that.
So the budget forms that I send out regularly to all the departments, that is the form that you can use to run, if you want to run your own projections or personnel requests. So everyone has access to that. I sent it out a couple of times.
But also really look at internal alignment within your departments, because then if you're doing one step for one individual, and maybe someone's been there for 15 years, it can cause issues within departments and within the county on top of that.
So I think we can put on, since Jennifer would like a little bit more time, we can put on for the next HR meeting and talk about that. I would still say though, that BOCC departments have to have two commissioners.
I'm fine with that.
Okay. All right, anything else? Okay, item four, requests for deputies, BOCC meetings, elections, et cetera. Sheriff?
Hi, Bob Norris, Sheriff. We just want to ask all the electeds and departments under the BOCC, if you have an event that you're going to need deputy personnel at, that you please budget that in your budget, because we don't have, you know, 10 deputies on per shift, that if community development calls and says, hey, we've got this meeting, we're expecting 250 people here, we would be more than happy to accommodate any of your requests for additional personnel, but to pull them out of our, our roster that provides service to the community, it's just, it's not a cowtown of 40,000 people anymore. We have fairly significant mental health calls for service that take a long time to resolve. So we just wish that you would put an X number in your budget if you anticipate for, whether it's elections or BOC meetings or the treasurer. I know you have some very, very volatile meetings, but no, anything that comes up in your, in your areas of responsibility.
So what if the BOCC made the sheriff's department whole, instead of having to have each department budget for which they have no idea? I mean, I can tell you right now, community development has no idea if they're going to have one, you know, huge issue, or if they're going to have 10 or 20, so.
I, I guess we don't have a problem with doing it. We just need to know, one, in advance, that it needs to be done in advance, generally not that day, but we need some sort of an advance notice. And I'll contact the, our liaison commissioner. But we need some sort of an advance notice. And I'll contact the, our liaison commissioner and say, hey, Jennifer would like us to have, you know, X amount of deputies over there, and we're going to do it on overtime. And I have no problem with that. Because are we stretching our limited resources now? It's very, very difficult.
Commissioners, I'd like to offer one thing for consideration also, and that is, and this is probably due to the nature of our business. It's on?
Speak up a little bit.
Sorry.
I can't hear you here. So speak up.
Okay. One of the things that I'd like the commissioners to consider, and I believe this is attributed to the nature of our business in vehicle licensing or DMV, we have a large volume of traffic that comes through there. And there is some seasonality to it. But there are times when we've had issues where just a need for a deputy to come down and intervene. Those are, you can't plan for those. You don't know when they're going to happen. They just happen. And I have recently learned that the deputy that we have on site here is no longer going to be present. Is that, do I understand that correctly?
No, no decision has been made on that.
Okay. Then, then I guess I'll withdraw my comment.
Okay. Any other thoughts or comments?
Well, I want to discuss it with the auditors division, but would it be something where if we end up doing this, it'd be under the BOCC's budget, be a line item we could create for overtime for these different events that we don't know necessarily we all are going to anticipate?
I think it's just cleaner to say, Sheriff's Department, we would like you to do this, and we understand that it's going to affect your overtime budget. I don't know why we would have to try to, you know, budget for all that.
Okay, so we're not trying to budget?
Because it's the same pot of money.
Yeah, it is. And I think in the end, it's just about properly accounting for it.
Yep, absolutely.
You know, in the end, it all comes out of the same pie. So if there's just some way that it could be maybe tracked, I guess, is what you're asking. And that way, it doesn't penalize your budget as much in the scheme of things.
Yep.
So it would be maybe Marsha having the time codes, just saying this overtime was for another elected official. Is that, and still keep it under your budget? Is that what we're?
Yeah, that's.
Okay.
Just whatever's going to be the most efficient way. And, you know, then people aren't stressing out about, well, you know, I thought we were only going to have two events this year, and now we have 14. And, you know, what do I do? So.
And my hopes is, in our next accounting software and payroll software, that we're able to develop codes so we can better track what overtime, special event overtime, or end of shift overtime. That would certainly help things. So, yeah, I would like to be able to have categories to designate where this overtime is being spent.
Okay. Any more thoughts, comments? Okay, it's public comment time. Will?
Regarding the, regarding the near-site clinic. So it sounds to me like they want to build a building that's nearby here, where there's going to be medical professionals that you guys can go see, so elected people and employees. I'm not, I see what he was saying, the consultant, that you guys would save money, you know, just, you know, in the final numbers, you guys would save money. So on the face of it, it sounds like a good thing. But I guess, I guess, not to be all wishy-washy, but principally, you know, based on principle, I don't, I don't think it's a good idea, because it creates a different parity between government and this regular citizenry. Because regular citizenry, they don't have access to essentially money to spend, you know, collectively as a citizenry to, you know, approach a big company like PMR to organize something like this. I think that's the problem, is that it creates a kind of weird parity, where essentially it can kind of stimulate the growth of government. Because it's just, it's like a perk, you know, to work, you know, to work for the county. So numbers-wise, I think it's cool. I think it's great. But I don't think, in terms of principle, I don't think it's a good idea. Yeah, that's.
Can I ask you a question?
Sure.
Knowing that turnover can cost us about $9 million a year in taxpayer money, if this helps retain employees, does that change your outlook?
Yeah. So that was another thing, too, is that it saves a lot of money, and it's going to help you guys recruit good talent and keep good talent, which is, you know, I've been going to some of these meetings. I know that's a recurring problem for you guys. Yes, that is very difficult. In terms of our economy, it's a lot smaller than, say, Sp- Spokane. So that's a huge problem. I feel like, this is a crazy idea, but hear me out. I feel like the real root problem is that Cootney government is just growing faster than it can keep up with. And so government is, you know, trying to play catch-up, but perhaps reaching for tools that is going to actually make the problem worse in the long run. So it's going to make government bigger. You know, because the contract, this is three years. And most likely, if that relationship develops, it's probably going to be indefinite in perpetuity. It's going to be a thing that's going to stay around. So I think the real answer is perhaps, have you guys ever done this before, as a BOCC has passed a moratorium to stop development?
It's illegal.
Isn't it in statute?
It's, you can do it for six months, only if there is imminent danger to health and welfare.
Yeah. I guess it's how that's, I guess that's how it's construed. Maybe that's a natural disaster, but maybe that's also funds in terms of keeping.
We've looked into that, the previous board did with legal. And we couldn't find a legal way to do it.
Right. Yeah, these are just my thoughts. I don't have the full picture, but I just wanted to share it with you guys. Yeah, thanks.
Thank you, Will. Okay. So that's it. Anybody on the phone? Nobody on the phone? And that's it in person. Okay, 9:57, meeting adjourned. Thank you all.